All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with a short prayer here. Lord, we thank you again for this day. Thank you for the MD and for the great place that it is to live. Pray for all the staff that work here and pray your safety on them. Pray for everyone that lives in the MD and keep them safe as well. And we ask again that you give us wisdom today as we make decisions here. In Jesus' name, amen. Sorry. Adoption of the agenda. Is there any additions, deletions?
Yes, I'd like to add into the agenda a discussion about provincial budget and Highway 28.
Where could we put that?
Through the chair to the council, I would suggest that the discussion on Highway 28 could be under Chief Administrative Officer 9.6.3. And as well, Mr. Deputy Reeve, I have two items for council's consideration to add. 9.3.4, the Junior Pontiacs request, that package was handed out earlier to council. And in addition to the correspondence, no action required. Of 10.23, letter from the town of Bonneville regarding indoor swimming pool costs.
Any other additions or deletions? Just looking for a motion and to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Any discussion on that? No, we'll just wait for it to come up and then we'll call for the vote. Okay, so we have a motion by Council Slipchuk to approve the agenda with the following additions. Junior, the Junior Pontiacs request, the provincial budget decision, and a letter from the town of Bonneville being added. Any discussion? We'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, that's carried. We'll move on to the adoption of the minutes. 3.1, regular council meeting, February 27th. Somebody just looking for a motion on that, I guess. Okay, thank you, Council Slager, for making a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting for February 27th, 2024. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. So move on to 7.1, development application.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is development permit application 2024-D-019. The applicant is Jeff Otulchuk and Heather Ross. The applicant is applying for a front yard variance from 25 feet to 16 feet and a rear yard variance from 98.4 feet to 53 feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage. The property is located lakefront in the Vezo Beach multi-lot residential subdivision on Moose Lake. Adjacent properties are country residential lots. The applicant is applying for a front yard variance from 25 feet to 16 feet and a rear yard variance from 98.4 feet to 53 feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage. The applicant received an approval for a similar variance on their lot to the east but have decided to redevelop this lot first. The lots of this subdivision are substandard and do not have environmental reserve between the rear property line and the high water mark. This makes the lot subject to the setbacks from Section 41, which is 98.4 feet from the high water mark. Previous applications were approved without consideration for Section 41 and were granted a 25-foot or less setback from the high water mark as per Section 71.2, Country Residential Resort District setbacks. A desktop review of the area shows that the shoreline is receding and is further into the lot than the high water mark, and a geotechnical study will be required to demonstrate the suitability of this requested setback. Many lots have garages placed closer to the front property line than the 25-foot allowable. This variance would bring the building in line with the existing garages to the east. As per Section 20 of the Land Use Bylaw, variances may be considered when there are practical difficulties unique to the land and when they will not interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties. This request would allow the house and garage to sit at similar setbacks in the neighborhood. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on February 7th, 2024, and we received no concerns. Recommendation for development application 2024-D-019 is approve the request for a front yard variance from 25 feet to 16 feet and a rear yard variance from 98.4 feet to 53 feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage as per Part 3, Section 20, Part 6, Section 32, and Part 7, Section 71 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or covered slash enclosed trailer. As per Section 71.4 of the Land Use Bylaw number 1667, the minimum setback shall be side yard 1.5 meters. Building location to be staked out by an Alberta Land Surveyor CET or other approved designation in Alberta and submitted for approval by the MD of Bonneville prior to commencement of construction. Upon foundation completion but prior to inspection, an Alberta Land Surveyor Building Certificate shall be provided to the Development Authority. And as per Section 41 of the Land Use Bylaw, the Development Authority requires a geotechnical engineer study prepared by a professional engineer illustrating that a lesser setback than the 30 meters is suitable. Any questions?
Go ahead, Council Slipchuk.
Yeah, that 98.4 high water mark, how is that determined? Like where did those numbers come from?
That's from the Land Use Bylaw.
Okay. So if we restrict it to 25 feet that they're asking, what protection do we have if it does reach the high table water mark? Like are we liable then if there's flooding?
Through the chair to Council Slipchuk. That is why we are requesting the geotechnical engineer study because we want to ensure that yes, this site is going to be suitable and this geotechnical engineer study that they're going to be required to do will show that yes, this is a suitable location for the dwelling with garage.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Council Slager?
The other properties, so you're recommending this based on other properties already having garages and buildings, you know, too close to the property lines? But do they all have variances on those then, or if they try to sell those, they couldn't sell because they're non-compliant? So I'm concerned because I guess we do this maybe a bit too often where we just kind of don't look at our regulations. We just look at the neighboring properties and because they maybe built them way before we had any guidelines or whatever, then we're saying, you know, this is okay. So I'm not really in favor of just overriding everything because the neighbors are doing the same thing. But I'm more concerned about the lake levels because we had a disaster some years ago when all these people were, you know, flooding and complaining and so now we're kind of just say, well, you can build even closer to the lake. So I'm not quite happy that we're doing that. So that's just my comment.
So through the chair to Deputy Slager, I mean, Council Slager. So these lots are substandard. They do not fall within any of our district sizes that we have now in our Land Use Bylaw. And we do have to look at these on a case-by-case basis. We understand that there were some lake level issues a few years ago, and what we can do going forward is to ensure that yes, these locations are going to be suitable if the lake level comes back up again.
Council Fadiev?
I mean, it's kind of one of these things where it's damned if you do, damned if you don't, right? I am definitely okay with it's going forward as long as it's very clear that, you know, it's builder beware. You know, that there's no, you know, you guys give me the permit, now my house is flooding, and those are the concerns I have. We've seen lots across the whole province where people built in floodplains and their houses have washed away. But I mean, there's got to be a risk and an onus to the builder. How can we mitigate that part of it that we're clear and, I guess, non liable for that part of it, or are we?
Again, this is why we are doing the geotechnical engineer study to show, for the applicant to show us that this is good and that should be sufficient.
And then one of it isn't good still, and then they still built, and then, you know what I mean? Like I just want it to be, you want to build it? No problem here. Go ahead, build it, but the risk is on you.
Through the chair to council, I'm hearing from at least three councils that there's a question. I would suggest a simple condition that could be on any questionable application that would just say simply and would stay on the development permit, that the MD is not liable for any flooding issues for, it would be very simple to come up with an actual condition that would say that the MD is not liable for high water tables, high water levels, and any flooding that exists based on this development. It would be, I think that hand in hand with the geotech study would provide some relief. There have been issues in the province in the last 15 years with high water. And in one case in particular, it went to, at the time, the MGB, which is now the Land Use Tribunal, and the municipality lost, and the houses were allowed to be built in and in 2015, they flooded on the Red Deer River in one of the counties west of Highway 2. So these are issues, and people do come back to the MD saying, you approved the permit, so now you have some responsibility. So I would suggest a condition added that indicates that the MD will be not liable for any flooding activity that takes place due to the change in this property and whatever buildings are being constructed.
Sorry, Council Fadiev and then Council Slager?
Yeah, if that would work or fly, I'd be 100% in favor of that. But again, as a builder, they, you know, I mean, it's a beautiful place to build and maybe it's their lifelong dream, and we, you know, shouldn't hold them back because of it.
Council Slager?
Can you talk a little bit again about you saying they're substandard lots or whatever? So, and my concern with that is that people buy these lots knowing that. So, you know, there's regulations and, you know, probably we should follow them. That's what we're trying to do. But, so it's a small lot, they know that, but now they don't want to follow the regulations. They just want to build something bigger, right? So, you know, that's kind of a concern. So are those all substandard lots along there and they've all applied for variances? I don't think we answered that one. Do we know that, or?
There are variances on some of the properties. Some of the properties were approved with the setbacks from Country Residential Resort District, so CR District, with the 25-foot setback from the rear property line. They should have been, Section 41, which is setbacks from high water mark, should have been considered, but they may not have been. They may have been approved with the standard setbacks, but they also may have been built not in the correct locations.
Can we follow up on that one? Because if you look at the aerial photo that you've got there, it's not a very good one, but is that a house on the lot that's already encroached into the other property?
Sorry, which?
Well, isn't that, what is that? Is that nothing?
So our aerials can be off up to like 10%. And yeah, it definitely can be encroaching into the neighbor's property because we did not have requirements for surveyor involvement on these small lots in previous years. We do have that now to ensure that people are building within their building envelopes with or without variances.
So can I just ask, so it looks like it's encroaching into the other lot, so we're okay with that too? Are they tearing that down and building a new house? Is that what they're doing?
They are tearing that down.
So they're tearing it down and building a new one?
Yes.
I just, I still think if they're building a new one, they should be able to build it to the standards of the lot, like to the size, not just make it so big that they need all these variances. This is the second, apparently they have another lot just west of this, and they've decided to do this one first before the other one? Is the other one the same issue where they're gonna have, well, that's a different issue. So I won't even ask for that one, but I mean, just note that, yeah, they want to build here, but it's...
Well, they would never be able to build a house with the setbacks that are currently, that's why it's a substandard lot, so it has to have different setbacks.
Well, how big is that lot?
Well, if you went 93 feet and then 25 feet, you have houses big.
I don't know how big the lot is.
Well, it says right here, there's measurements right on the package here.
Less than 5,000 square feet.
It's 118 feet long.
I'm not saying you couldn't build, of course, you could build a small house on it.
If you had the 93, that's why they're asking for variance on a substandard lot.
Okay, well, I'd argue that you could build anything on any size lot you wanted to. They could build a small house on that lot without having variances, but of course, it's going to be small, right? But anyway, they knew that, so I guess we'll decide if we're going to approve it.
Council Fadiev, something?
Yeah, I mean, we inherited a lot of substandard lots when we took a lot of things from the ID over in Murray Lake. It's a good example. A lot of the lake lots, they were bent for cabins. Now there are people are building stuff on them, and there's going to be variances constantly. We've seen it over the last few years, and we've been granting them. I think it's, you move in those areas expecting those kind of things, and that's where it's at. No different than Crane Lake, right? It's all the same. I think it's good.
Okay, so we're just looking for a motion here?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion for option number one. And then if you're able to add that the MD is not responsible for any flooding, then I'll finally add too. I don't know how that's worded, but...
Probably to council through the chair, probably something as simple as the MD holds no liability now or in the future for potential flooding on any lot. I'd have to get the development, the authority may have to come up with something. And I think that may be a standard clause that should be in many of our, any of the development permits that come that are similar in nature.
Well, not even on the lake, but then, you know.
Anywhere, absolutely.
We do have draft wording prepared. Unfortunately, we're unable to scroll the motion for you guys to see it, but it is with the additional condition of releasing the MD of Bonneville from liability in the event of a flood, high water table, or other overland water issues that may arise due to the location of the dwelling.
Yeah, that should really be standard on any permit they're issuing, right?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just one last question. So when the flooding did happen some years ago, and it wasn't that many years ago, we have lots of now maps and stuff showing where that high water level was. It would be nice to, you know, have that, show that on these kind of maps too when we're doing this sort of thing and saying, here's what it was before, and maybe more for the residents or whatever, so they realize that if they weren't here 20 years or 10 years ago, or whatever it was, six years ago, that there's that possibility. Because I'm sure we have those on file somewhere. Anyway, thanks.
All right, so we have a motion stating that council approves development permit application number 24-D-019 for a front yard variance from 25 feet to 16 feet and a rear yard variance from 20, whoops, moved here on the screen, and a rear yard variance from 98 feet to 53 feet for the construction of a single-family dwelling with garage within southeast 9616 west of the fourth as a discretionary use pursuant to Part 3, Section 20, and Part 7, Section 71.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Jeff Otulchuk and Heather Ross as per recommendation presented with the additional condition of releasing the MD of Bonneville from liability in the event of a flood, high water table, or other overland water issues that may arise due to the location of the dwelling. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. So we'll move on to 7.2.
Mr. Chair? If council is interested, I heard some consensus regarding the liability clause, maybe a motion arising adding the liability clause as a standard condition on all development permit applications?
Anybody interested in making a motion to add that? Council Fadiev? Yeah, Council Fadiev moves to that. We'll just wait for that to come up.
And while staff is doing that, just so council's aware, the high water table or mapping is provincial. We've been fighting with the province now for five or six years on new high water. Every municipality is fighting with the province over getting up-to-date high water level maps. So any map we would have now may or may not be entirely accurate regarding what the actual high water levels and the floodplain is. So that is, the floodplain mapping has been a source of some irritation with most municipalities with the province for several years.
Yeah, I realize it has here actually too, but when the lake was flooding, they actually had, you know, they had engineering firms come in and actually do those studies for the lake, so I'm sure we have those. I'm not sure if they're provincially recognized or whatever, but at least they mapped it out.
We're just waiting for the motion to come up, then we'll continue.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, like this liability that we're going to add to this, can we get a lawyer's opinion on if that's even worth anything?
We certainly can, and if council would like to add to that, to have administration reach out to get a legal opinion regarding that clause, absolutely, we can certainly do that.
I'm not sure. I mean, I think so. I'm not sure what your opinion would be. A lot of these clauses don't mean anything, but...
In many cases, they're not as valuable as we would like them to be. However, it does indicate to prospective buyers in the future when it's on title that it may be a bit of a warning, a red flag to a potential buyer that there is something they should give serious thought to. Typically, where we would lose a liability case is if they could prove negligence or gross negligence on the part of the MD. And that's where this would probably be in question, is if we approved something that was likely viewed by the court to be grossly negligent, then we would still have some liability. I think overall, I think it's probably a worthwhile endeavor, but I certainly wouldn't hesitate at council's direction to get a legal opinion about that and maybe some additional wording as well. So if council would like to add that to this and then to send us back, because we can certainly come back in a few weeks with the actual legal opinion and what the legal wording would be that might be different than what we've suggested.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I think it's worth getting a legal opinion, and what I'd be concerned about is if we had the high water map from whatever it was, 2016 or something, and it showed a lot of those are already underwater, then I think we'd be negligent in saying, you know, you can build here, but you might be flooding, and we knew they would. I don't know the area if there was, if there's any flooding there at all. Where's it, Council Carson?
Well, some of the beaches are robed away, but there wasn't any flooding, it's pretty high up.
I think you got to choose your words wisely there, because I mean, where, I mean, 2016, I mean, people built in floodplains that haven't flooded and overlapped where there used to be rivers, and now they're flooding. I mean, it's, it has nothing to do with the MD.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that we knew it was, like there was high water there, right? I mean, it was a big concern.
That particular spot, it's high up. I don't think there'd ever be water on that where they're wanting to build.
Okay, well, I mean, that's good to know. I still think it'd be nice to have that legal opinion just on the statement.
On the wording, yeah, I agree with you on that.
And through the chair, just, we use words like floodplain, high water, et cetera, et cetera. I think to be clear, the standard throughout the province is the one in 100-year flood. That is, when we talk about floodplains, it's the one in 100. We don't typically worry about the one in five, the one in 10, but it's the one in 100-year flood, which are typically the ones that are the most, for lack of a better word, disastrous, potentially the most damaging. So our floodplain mapping from the province is all based on the one in 100, occasionally one in 50 if it's in an active flood area that floods regularly. But in our case, we would probably be looking at the one in 100-year floodplain and mapping for any of the lakes and rivers in our municipality. So just for definition, floodplain typically would be one in 100-year.
Mr. Chair, just to make sure we understand correctly, so the motion is shifted to get legal opinion regarding the use of that conditional, that additional condition? Is that correct? And so do we want, is council wanting to direct administration to apply this to development applications only or development and subdivision applications?
There are two options, council. Can I either just say, go get a legal opinion, we're going to apply this today until we get legal opinion, and then we might revise it, or hold off on actually making this a condition of application on other applications until we get an official ruling from legal? I would probably suggest at this point, it would be best to get the official, we're only talking a few weeks anyway, to get an official legal opinion with official wording
Absolutely, I'm okay with that, for sure.
Does that give you the card you need?
So do we need to table that then, or just, no?
No, we have a motion prepared that you can review and make sure that we've captured your intention with the motion that you've made.
Okay. So it's moved that council directs administration to obtain a legal opinion regarding the use of an additional condition for development and subdivision permit applications, releasing the MD of Bonneville from liability in the event of a flood, high water table, or other overland water issues that may arise due to the location of the development or subdivision. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Now we'll move on to 7.2.
This is development permit application 2024-D-0204, pure environmental waste management. The applicant is applying to construct a provincially approved landfill. The property is located 2.25 miles north of Crane Lake, west on Range Road 440 on Crown Land. Adjacent properties are Crown Land. The applicant would like to construct a Class II landfill with an office trailer and shop on Crown Land. They have a provincial disposition for the road and the land where the landfill will be located and an environmental, Alberta Environmental Protection and Enhancement Act approval for the construction, operation, and reclamation of the Class II landfill. They will not receive hazardous waste at this site. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out, were not sent out, as there are no adjacent landowners. Our recommendation for development application 2024-D-020 is approve the request for a Class II landfill as a discretionary use as per Part 6 of the general regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions. Shall be operated as per the provincial approvals. Applicable building, electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. And just a little additional information, so this landfill is for oil, field, and industrial waste. It's commonly referred to as like dirty dirt that they pull out from those sites. So it's like drilling mud and stuff like that, like the terravita. So it's like drilling mud and stuff like that, like the terravita that is by Beaver Dam there. They will not be accepting domestic waste at this time.
Any any discussion on this one?
Yeah, thanks for the clarity on that one, and I'd like to make the motion to option number one, please.
Okay, so we have a motion here that council approves development permit number twenty-four or twenty-twenty-four dash D dash zero-two-zero for a class-two landfill within, and there's four quarters there, the following four quarter sections, as a discretionary use pursuant to part seven, sixty-nine point two of the land use bylaw for pure inventural, for pure environmental waste management as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion yet?
Just the the road access, that's a private road, so does that mean anything to us? Is there any concerns about the location and no road, other than a private road?
That does not mean anything to us. We do not have to maintain it or have any care or control over it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Keesha, we had this brought forth last council meeting, but we didn't take, get at, get to it. So did you hear anything from the client if there was any issues caused caused because of the delay to them, or?
There were no issues caused by the delay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to seven point three.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash zero-two-nine. The applicant is the MD of Bonneville. The applicant is applying for the construction of a fire hall and grader shop as a discretionary use. The property is located northwest of Highway fifty-five and Forty-S sixth Street, which is also a Range Road four-twelve in the Hamlet of Cherry Grove. Adjacent properties are Hamlet Residential Parcels and Quarter Section Remnants. The applicant is applying for the construction of a fire hall and grader shop to serve the residents of Cherry Grove and surrounding areas. There will be operating noise from up to three graders and two fire trucks, which will be mitigated by a ten-meter screen of trees maintained between the building site and the adjacent residential properties to the north. The vehicle bays will open to the south, and noise will be limited to when the equipment leaves and returns at the end of the day. There will be additional volunteers on site in the case of training and emergency response. An Alberta roadside transportation development permit was approved with the setbacks as per the attached site plan. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on February twentieth, and we received one letter of concern. The letter is attached and can be summarized as such. They state they do not agree with the proposed location and are concerned over the lack of communication during the process. They believe the fire hall was to be located either near the Cherry Grove Community Center or the Egg Society Grounds. They feel that the proposed location will impact the quality of their property as well as its value. They are requesting to be involved in the construction, design, and landscaping decisions, and are requesting the construction of a berm with large carnivorous trees around the site to reduce noise and line of sight. They would also like to be to review the construction bids for the project. They question how this use fits in with within Hamlet Single Family Residential District, which I will address now. In all of our districts, we do have a statement that says those uses, which in the opinion opinion of the development authority, are similar to the permitted or discretionary uses and which conform to the general purpose and intent of this district. This statement is in the land use bylaw, just in case a use was overlooked and not included in the in the land use bylaw, and a fire hall was not listed anywhere as discretionary or permitted. And so therefore, an application for this use can come forward and be considered as a discretionary use. So. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty-four dash D dash zero-two-nine is approve the request for the construction of a fire hall and grader shop as a discretionary use as per part six of the general regulations, part seven, section seventy-two, seventy-seven point two of the land use bylaw with the following conditions. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained on site in a waste bin or covered slash enclosed trailer as per section two of the Consolidated Public Safety Bylaw number eighteen-twelve. As per section forty-two point one of the land use bylaw number sixteen-sixty-seven, the minimum south yard setback shall be seventy-one point three meters from the center line of the adjacent primary highway. And as per section seventy-seven point four, the minimum setback shall be front and rear yard seven point six meters, north side yard one point five meters. Any questions?
Counsel Fadiev?
Yeah, there's some discrepancies to their letter, but anyways, there were, we we heard from our administration, the two options that were laid out, one was at the at the Egg Society Grounds that did not meet our needs, and the second one was dislocation, and I'll be happy to make option number one as as my motion. So council approved this permit.
Thank you, Counsel Fadiev. So it's moved by Counsel Fadiev that council approves development permit application number twenty-twenty-four dash D dash zero-two-nine for a fire hall and grader shop within northeast ten sixty-two-one west of the fourth as a discretionary use pursuant to part six of the general regulations and part seven, section seventy-seven point two of the land use bylaw for the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, Counsel.
I'm just curious if we did we end up picking a contractor for this one, or?
Through the chair, to Counselor Skarson, tenders have been opened. However, we are not awarding until we work our way through the development permit appeal process. We don't want to be find out that there's an appeal, other things happen, and we we end up with a we end up with the with the tender. So we're holding off until such time that we work our way through the fourteen-day appeal period.
Any other discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Counselors.
Yeah, I think because of the timelines and our great job of our of our admin that these these tenders came in under budget because of that, and any kind of timeline is hopefully won't affect our budget, so.
All right, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to eight point one for subdivision applications.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Application two zero-two-four dash S dash zero-zero-one for Ken Friesen. Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two zero-two-four dash S dash zero-zero-one for council consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing a boundary adjustment to an existing two-point-nine-seven acre parcel, increasing it to a seven-point-five acre parcel from northwest twenty-seven sixty-three-four west of Fourth Meridian, as shown in appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was sent to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of February twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, to submit concerns to be considered at the February twenty-seventh, twenty-four council meeting. However, with delays, we're now bringing it forward for today. Council, no concerns have been received regarding this application. For more detailed information, we've got on appendix B. The application meets all conditions of the Municipal Government Act, Subdivision and Development Regulations, and the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. Therefore, we recommend it be approved as per the following conditions. Number one, legal and physical access to proposed parcels and remnant. Two, cash and lieu municipal reserves. Three, real property report. Four, septic compliance. Five, consolidation of CFT two-zero-two-two-zero-eight-four-seven-zero, Lot One, Block One, Plan zero-six-two-seven-eight-nine-seven, with the proposed boundary realignment consolidated into one parcel, and the taxes to be paid in full. The recommendation forward is that council approves subdivision application two zero-two-four dash S dash zero-zero-one to make a boundary adjustment to an existing two-point-nine-seven acre parcel, increasing it to a seven-point-five acre parcel from agricultural quarter section northwest twenty-seven sixty-three-four west of four for Ken Friesen as per conditions presented.
Okay, just looking for a motion. Counsel Swiger.
Thanks. I'll make the motion for option one.
Okay, Counsel, thank you, Counsel Swiger, for moving that council approves subdivision application number twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-one to make a boundary adjustment to an existing two-point-nine-seven acre parcel, increasing the parcel to seven-point-five acres from agricultural quarter section northwest twenty-seven sixty-three-four west of the fourth for Ken Friesen as per the conditions presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to eight point two.
On to subdivision two zero-two-four dash S dash zero-zero-two. Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two zero-two-four dash S dash zero-zero-two for council consideration, wherein the applicant is proposing to subdivide one five-acre parcel from northwest thirty-two sixty dash four west of four, as shown on the maps. Notification of proposed subdivision was sent to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of February thirteenth to submit concerns to be considered at the March twelfth council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. The application meets all conditions of Municipal Government Act, Subdivision and Development Regulations, the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, Municipal Development Plan, and the Land Use Bylaw. Therefore, we recommend it be approved as per the following conditions. Legal and physical access to proposed parcel and remnants. Dedication of a seventeen-foot strip of land on the north and south sides of the corridor section for future road widening. Real property report, septic compliance with the Alberta Public Health Act and Safety Council, Alberta Safety Codes, pardon me, and taxes to be paid in full. Administration recommended action is that council approves subdivision application two zero-two-four dash S dash zero-zero-two to subdivide a five-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section northwest thirty-two sixty-four west of the Fourth Meridian for Albert Rondo as per the conditions presented.
I'll make a motion for option one.
Thank you, Counsel Subcheck, for moving that council approves subdivision application number twenty-twenty-four dash zero-zero-two to subdivide a five-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section northwest thirty-two sixty dash four west of the fourth for Albert Rondo as per the conditions presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We will now move on to nine point two point one, equipment purchase of a front-load garbage truck.
Good morning, council.
Good morning, Brad.
I'm here to present an RFD for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five front-load garbage truck. One of our three front-load garbage trucks, unit ten-five-forty, will be due for replacement in twenty-twenty-five. This truck currently has over six-hundred-and-two-thousand kilometers and will be fifteen years old at the time of replacement. When the equipment replacement program began, the front-load garbage trucks were given a ten-year useful lifespan. Through improved maintenance and truck rotation, we have extended the useful life to fifteen years. With the expected twelve-to-eighteen-month wait on delivery of a new truck from the time of order, a request for proposals for a new front-load garbage truck was posted on Alberta Purchasing Connection on December nineteenth and closed on January twenty-sixth. In total, eight proposals were received. And you can see the summary of the eight submissions up there with the pricing at the time of their submission. Administration is seeking council approval of up to five-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars to purchase a new front-load garbage truck from Stahl Peterbilt to be delivered in twenty-twenty-five. Exact pricing will be dependent on the US dollar exchange rate at the time of order, as a truck chassis will be manufactured in the US. Of note, I just received an updated price on the truck this morning, and it has increased almost ten thousand dollars to five-hundred-and-three-thousand-four-zero-one. So the reference to strategic plan is goal three to promote community development. The cost and source of funding for this purchase is requested to come from the Equipment Replacement Reserve, and payment would be made upon delivery of the unit. The administration recommended action is that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of a new front-load garbage truck from Stahl Peterbilt, up to a maximum of five-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars for delivery in twenty-twenty-five to be funded from the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
Looking for a motion. Yeah, Counsel Swiger.
Just a quick question. When they give you a quote on a tender, don't they have to honor it for sixty days or something, or no?
Through the reef, or through the deputy reef to Counselor Swiger. So there was a thirty-day on this. But part of that quote as well was that the, so the thirty-day was on the the compactor part of the truck, but the chassis is dependent on US pricing, so on the US exchange rate at the time of of orders.
Just looking for any other discussion or a motion? Yeah, Counsel Fadiev?
Yeah, I'll make the the motion. It's also nice to see these trucks getting used up to six-hundred-and-two-thousand kilometers. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fadiev, for making the motion that council approves an unbudgeted unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of a new front-load garbage truck from Stahl Peterbilt, up to a maximum of five-hundred-and-five-thousand for delivery in twenty-twenty-five to be funded from the Equipment Replacement Reserve. Any discussion? Yeah, Counsel Subcheck?
I just want to mention a good job on you guys extending the life of these units and that. That's a big saving, and good work, guys. Thank you.
All right, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is it also going to be a white one?
Through the reef, through the deputy reef, sorry. This would be green.
Wow, okay.
Okay, thank you. That is carried. We'll move on to nine point two point two, school resource officer program review.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of council.
Morning. Good morning. You just said good morning back.
Oh, thank you. Approximately one year ago, the school resource officer, our school resource officer program underwent some significant changes when in January of twenty-twenty-three, the program was reduced from two full-time employees to one. Before that, and dating back to two thousand and nine, the MD had fully funded the two positions for approximately fifteen years. Following the staff reduction in twenty-twenty-three, modifications were made to the programming to adjust the remaining employee's workload. Since then, despite previous discussions with potential funding partners, including the school divisions and municipalities, the SRO program has continued to be funded exclusively by the MD. On January twenty-third of twenty-twenty-four, the MD received a resignation letter from the remaining SRO indicating their last day of employment. Due to the amount of time needed to advertise for hire, security clear, and train a full-time employee, it would be impossible to offer our schools a meaningful program for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Given the funding challenges in years past with this program, administration is seeking council's direction on the future of the SRO program, and specifically whether this vacant SRO position should be staffed long-term if no funding partnerships are realized moving forward. In twenty-twenty-three, the SRO program delivered nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven presentations to more than fifteen-thousand-six-hundred students across twenty-three area schools and municipalities. This was accomplished exclusively through MD funding and with the MD only accounting for approximately thirty-three percent of the students in question. The reference on this is the total students in question are seven-thousand-and-sixty-one. Cold Lake students account for three-thousand-and-ninety-eight of those students. Bonneville Town students account for sixteen thousand, excuse me, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven students, and the MD students account for twenty-three-hundred-and-fifty-six. This data indicates that the MD is funding the SRO program exclusively exclusively while benefiting only marginally. benefiting only marginally a number of MD residents. If the remaining SRO position were not filled, the MD would realize the savings of approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in salary and benefits for the remainder of the twenty twenty four calendar year. A permanent discontinuation of the program would see savings of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Administration is seeking a direction from council on this and administration is recommending that council delays filling the vacant school resource officer position until another funding partner can be found to help make financial contributions towards the program.
Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Gudolfi. Yeah, so our policing costs are going up and I think this is the last year where we know kind of where we're going to be at. It's also, I'm in favor of option one, I mean, there's, it's, it's too bad that our regional partners can't see the benefits of this program and that we're, you know, we're, we are ones that are coming up with the cost. Our other costs are going up as well, so this has to be a shared program as far as I'm concerned and hopefully to benefit the kids out there, but it's got to be shared, so, and that case, I'll make a motion for option number one, that we delay the vacant school resource position until the funding partner is met.
Okay, we have a motion moved by Counselor Fadiev that council delays filling the vacant school resource officer position until another funding partner can be found to help make financial contributions toward the program. Any further discussion on the motion? Yeah, Counselor Swiger?
I'll just comment also, you know, it's an amazing program and, you know, with everything that's going on in the world now, it's unfortunate we have to kind of lose that program. So, I mean, I'm in favor of it and I, you know, I would say that if we have a good program as we did have, we'd have two resource officers, but, so I'm hoping that the school boards and the other municipalities are kind of listening and, you know, maybe think twice about it because it's a great program, but I'm in favor of option one also.
Okay, any other discussion? Counselor Subchak?
I agree with Counselor Swiger that this is a great program for the kids, but I hope the council and school boards find their hearts to come forward and help with the funding.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to nine point three point one for land use bylaw.
I get to wear a different hat today as well. Administration is requesting a decision for the second and third reading on bylaw land use, or LU five seven eight, for the redistricting of the portions of northwest thirty sixty-one five west of the fourth meridian and northeast thirty sixty-one five west of the fourth meridian as shown on the map attached, appendix A. The proposed application would redistrict the property from agricultural district AG to direct control district number five, Municipal District of Bonneville Regional Airport, YBY district. This change ensures the property near the Bonneville Regional Airport are used for appropriate purposes that support the airport. The MD of Bonneville is proposing the rezoning of the subject parcel, the current area of the proposal, of the portion of northwest thirty sixty-one five is approximately forty-seven point five eight acres, and the current area of the portion of northeast thirty sixty-one five is approximately thirty point one acres. A public hearing was held on February thirteenth with no one in attendance to speak either in favor of or in opposition of the application. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number LU five seven eight, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I'll make the option to go to second reading, please.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Fadiev that bylaw number LU five seven eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw sixteen sixty-seven, land use bylaw be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Oh, okay. Can come up. Okay, they got your vote recorded though? Okay. Okay, we'll go on to.
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you Counselor Subchak, that bylaw LU five seven eight be given third reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's also carried, did it come up for you that time? Okay, we'll take a quick, a quick five minute break then before our next, for nine point three two. Okay, welcome back everybody. We'll go to nine point three point two for the library operating budget amendment.
Thank you council. Today, I'm presenting the twenty twenty four library operating budget amendment report. During the twenty twenty four municipal budget deliberations at the end of last year, administration provided council a revised contribution amount for each of the two library boards in Bonneville and Cold Lake during the verbal presentations. However, these new values that were accepted were not reflected in the approved operating budget document. Therefore, administration is requesting council to approve the addition of the funding shortfall amount of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents to be added to the twenty twenty four operating budget. The table below summarizes the contributions presented versus included in the budget. Reference to our strategic plan is goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. Our source of funding for this seven thousand seventy-one hundred dollars will be the twenty twenty four operating budget itself. Our communication strategy is we will notify the two library boards of today's decision by council in writing. Administration's recommended action is that council approves amending the MD of Bonneville twenty twenty four operating budget to add additional funding in the amount of three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents to the Bonneville Municipal Library and three thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars to the Cold Lake Public Library.
Okay, any questions or for motion? Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I'll be happy to make the motion for option number one, please.
Okay. Thank you Counselor Fadiev for moving that council amends, approves amending the Municipal District of Bonneville twenty twenty four operating budget to add additional funding in the amount of three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents to the Bonneville Municipal Library and three thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars to the Cold Lake Public Library. Any discussion? Yeah, Counselor Subchak?
I just got a question about the, you got under cost and source of funding, source of funding question mark is what, are you saying maybe there's another area we could have took this funding from?
Through the chair, that should have been deleted, it was a typo. So the source of funding itself is our actual twenty twenty four operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies.
Yeah, I got a question on that then. So if we just increase the budget here on the spot, where does the money come from for the budget?
I'll ask Susan to come up and clarify for you, one moment.
So by approving this motion, what will happen is that there will be a seven thousand dollar increase to the operating budget, and, and so when the tax rate bylaw is presented to council, it'll be included in, the amount will increase from the last report that was given to you.
Okay, thank you Susan. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. We'll move on to nine point three point three, Cold Lake Native Friendship Center.
At the regular meeting of council on February thirteenth, delegation was made to council by the Cold Lake Native Friendship Center, providing information on and requesting support for their advocacy efforts for their Cookham's House Men's Shelter Program. Council directed administration to bring their request back to a future meeting of council for consideration. Since its inception in twenty fifteen, Cookham's House has established itself within the community and has worked in tandem with many local and law enforcement agencies to provide a safe, stable, and substance-free home for transient men who are at risk for violence and substance addiction. Currently, Cookham's House is looking to expand its facilities in order to provide services to a greater number of people of all cultural backgrounds, including women as well. Historically, the MD of Bonneville supports social services initiatives such as this mainly through our annual financial contributions to both the Cold Lake and District FCSS and the Bonneville and District FCSS. Attached for council's information in appendix A is their delegation information which they presented on February thirteenth. Additionally, I did have a chance to receive additional information from the Native Friendship Center, which council has received a copy of, just to provide a little bit more detail on a one-year operating cost associated, not including wages or their mortgage payments. They've also provided a copy of the Cold Lake Native Friendship Center's financial statement for the year ending March thirty first, twenty twenty three. Reference to our strategic plan is goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. Cost and source of funding, the annual, after speaking with them following the delegation, the request is for an annual contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars towards their operational costs. Possible source of funding is, should council choose, one option is the council operating budget for grants to industry and non-government organizations, which hasn't already been allocated, that current balance is twenty-six thousand dollars. Plus, a recommendation to incorporate potentially the organization and this program specifically into our community association operating grant policy as an eligible organization. There, it could fit under any one of the established categories, which I do have a copy of the policy if council wants to take a look at that at all, including the current list of eligible organizations. Another option is the community action grant operating budget, should council choose to direct the center to instead apply for the program sponsorship funding, between two to five thousand dollars would fit in the existing grant policy. However, just to note that that is subject to their grant application, meeting the grant program requirements, with our next application deadline actually this Friday on March fifteenth, followed by June fifteenth and October fifteenth. The Cold Lake Native Friendship Center would be notified of the decision today by council in writing. Administration's recommended action, there are a number of options we've presented and our recommendation is at council's discretion. So we have split up the options between two, there are two requests, one was for financial funding and one was for a letter of support.
Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Good morning, Ms. Kewell, thanks for the additional information, it was good to see their actual financials. In regards to the Bonneville Friendship Center, what kind of funding are we giving them and, yeah?
Through the chair, we do not provide funding to the Bonneville Native Friendship Center, however, we have sponsored some of their events or attended their special events in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Subchak?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a few comments here. I went to Cookham's House here a couple weeks ago, got a tour and spoke with them, and it's a great thing they're doing, and I believe it's also helps like crime prevention because they're trying to take people off the streets, so each one to take off the street is one less person, but it's not just to prevent crime as well, but it's also to help people. And I wonder if there's any other option, because I know he mentioned they have a mortgage on the property. If we could look at maybe even just taking over the mortgage and this way their interest rate, I assume that they're probably paying over eight percent interest rate, and if we could just carry the mortgage over at a low one percent interest rate, we carry the mortgage and did get a lot of extra funding yearly because they wouldn't be paying that interest to the bank. But mind you, I'd have to check into that, I'd like more information because there'd probably be penalties if, they might have higher penalties than fair because they buy out the mortgage early. But I think this is a program that we should stand behind, and we can't do nothing about crime, and this is a part I think we could help and try to do something about crime. And that's where I just want to give my thoughts on all that, so.
Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I, I agree with Counselor Slipchak on a lot of these things, but we got to be careful staying in our lane, had a conversation with our, with our MLA about supporting this moving forward, there's a lot of mental health issues and funding that needs to get done to this, as well as a social housing, which the province is responsible for, and I think it's important for the province to step up on this, and I mean, we're, you know, we have the same issues with, with, in Bonneville and over there, I mean, it's, you know, we have to be fair across the board. I don't know what their housing situation looks like, if, is that a building on the city property or is that their own, right? I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
Well, I was advised the city gave them that property for a dollar.
Okay, so that's their.
And then in discussion, they were possible to be going to be taking over the John Howard Center, the homeless shelter there, and then utilize that as to help get people off the streets before you move into their home, you gotta be willing to change.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think that level of cooperation is going to work well with the two different organizations. They have a lot of different views, and they're, and they're quite different, but definitely, I would, I would love to set up a meeting with, with the Minister of Indigenous, what do you call it, yeah, not affairs, but.
Relations.
Relations, and to, to see if we can do something, do something with that, that'd be, that'd be great, if council could, could do something with that, that'd be, sorry, administration could set something up with that, that'd be great, so this way we can get him to talk to mental health and to housing and see if we can do a permanent solution for them. That's kind of where, you know, I'd be in favor.
I forget, the gentleman has named that presented here the other day, the other week, and.
Zane, I think is his name.
Zane Thane.
What's that?
Zane Thane.
Zane Thane.
Yeah. And he's got a, like a hands-on experience and I believe he can do, he can do things we gotta, I believe we gotta support.
Mr.?
Yeah, Counselor Swiger?
Request one that council approves a letter to the minister, do we actually have a letter written up for the Minister of Indigenous Relations yet? Or is that the letter that they provided?
Through the chair, no, we haven't drafted one yet, this is if council would like us to draft one and submit one.
Well, I make them, I'll make that motion that we, we dropped up a letter, and maybe that gets us in the door though, maybe for, maybe we can request to talk with them at RMA.
Yeah, I don't know if RMA is going to do it, but I'll be happy to, to, to get this done and help these guys out because it's definitely, it's a, it's a need, exactly what Counselor Slipchak said, it, it is a, you know, it is a mental health, it is a crime prevention, it is getting people, you know, the right, the right aid needed, but again, it's, it is provincially motivated and needed, and we need to get that, that message out with them.
Yeah, CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if council would also like as part of that motion to not just write a letter, if council would also like to direct administration to arrange a potential meeting with the Indigenous Minister at some point in the future, I don't think we'll get one, the convention being next week, but we certainly could reach out and attempt to get a meeting at some point this spring.
Yeah, that'd be great. I know that there's, there is grant opportunities out there, but it's, you know, they got denied a, a grant by the City of Cold Lake with the, like, the inclusion grant, because they need the money for, for staffing, which is not a, an option for the grant. It is purely capital, not administrative, so I think with the proper, I guess, having the proper people in place so they can get grants is definitely there, and I think there is money out there for them.
Just wait for the motion to come up here, and then we'll read it.
I just wonder what initiatives means, because that, are we also, are they looking, I mean, they're obviously looking for funding. Do we want to say anything in there about funding? Or is it, because their initiative is already, they're underway, they're operating, but initiative could just mean they want to do something else. I'm not sure how we word that one, but I guess that comes out in the letter, right?
Yeah.
So maybe the motion's okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Swiger that council approves a letter to the Minister of Indigenous Relations in support of the Cold Lake Native Friendship Center Cookham's House Initiatives, and further directs administration to arrange a meeting with the Minister of Indigenous Relations. Any discussion on this? Seeing on the call for the vote? That's carried. Now, do we have another motion coming forward, or is, where are we at here?
We are looking for a second motion with regards to their request for financial support.
Okay.
So currently, just to kind of, just to go through those for council, the first request is to approve the, to approve a funding request on a one-time basis. The second one is to approve it, approve the one-time sponsorship, and furthermore, to direct administration to incorporate them into our current community association operating grant policy, adding them as an eligible association up to 25,000 annually. The third one is that council directs administration to advise the center to apply for funding for their Cookham's House Initiative through our Community Action Grant Program. And the fourth one is to accept their request as information.
Okay, we're just looking for somebody to make a motion with one of those or some, whatever you want to make. Go ahead, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, sorry, the first motion, I kind of like it, but it's, it's just, it's just coming from the MB, but this is kind of a, this is like a regional thing. The City of Cold Lake, the MDA Bonneville, Town of Bonneville, like, should, should we have kind of a joint letter? Should we see if the other community, I mean, if the other communities aren't even interested in supporting it at all, that'd be a different story, but I would hope they are. I, I'm not sure. Is, is there any way of, of kind of, or does council want to work with Cold Lake or Bonneville on that, on that letter? Any comments from council, I guess I'll ask.
Counselor Fadiev.
Yeah, I think, I think the first one with the letter of support and meeting with the minister, that's kind of dealt with already, and, but I think this is the funding part of it.
No, I realize that, but I'm just thinking, it's a letter of support from the MDA Bonneville, and they're gonna, the minister's gonna wonder, well, you know, why is the MDA Bonneville the only people kind of wanting to support this?
Well, and that's, and they, and they should wonder that, because this was brought up to the local representative, and it's, and it has gone nowhere, right?
Okay, well, maybe that's okay then.
So we need to take the, the charger. Yeah, for sure, right, so.
So, question then, on that, Counselor Fadiev, did you said, like, has the City of Cold Lake been asked for letter of support too, do you know, or?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I know they've been asked for, for funding, but the way they, they apply for the funding, they didn't apply for it correctly, so they got, they got denied because it was more operational and, and it's more of a capital request.
And through the chair, just as a reminder as well, the City of Cold Lake, although might not have done a letter of support, they did give them a valuable piece of property for one dollar. So I, there's, there's some offset there.
Counselor Skarsen.
So is there ask for, to cover the utilities? Is that their actual ask? I didn't see it in here anywhere.
Through the chair, so their original request, which they submitted in writing, was actually for $100,000 towards their operating costs, including staff salaries, education, readiness resources, maintenance and improvements to the facilities, community outreach and awareness programming. Then they just opted to come to council and present their request as a delegation. It was a more of a general request. However, after their presentation and upon further clarity from their executive director and from their manager, they have asked for the 25,000 to cover operational costs for, on an annual basis, or the ability to apply for that.
So you're saying that if they, if we give them the 25,000, they'd have to apply each year for it again, is that right?
Through the chair, that is correct. Every, every eligible organization on their operating grant policy, they do have to apply every year and meet the criteria.
That just assumes that we take it out of that grant, though. Is that what you're saying? If we, if it make, yeah, because we could just make a council motion to fund them 25,000 a year out of something, but, I mean, I don't, sorry, but I don't really like to take it out of, you know, the community grant stuff that we've already got, because then it just, we don't have to put more into it anyway to account for it, so.
Through the chair, based on our current approved eligible community association list and funding amounts, we, it would estimate, if they were all successful, the value, if they all applied for the maximum amount and qualified, would be close to $700,000. The approved budget in 2024 for this policy, for the operating grant policy, is $500,000, which would be adding on another possibility there as well, if we do add it, if council chooses to add them as an eligible association. Do you have a copy of the policy with the list, just council, would council like to see that?
I'd say yes.
Okay, Counselor.
Can we just pass that around then? Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor.
Could we do that one-time 25,000 and have administration discuss with them about their mortgage and that, like, be kind of be creative here, maybe a guy can, instead of giving the money to the banks as interest, we could carry the mortgage, and that, that'd be, I believe that'd be a high number every month, a contribution to them, and which carry the mortgage? Is that something that?
Through the chair, to Counselor Slipchuck, as they are a nonprofit organization, the MGA, I believe, does allow, we certainly did it with the Fire Department, looking at their audited financial statement, they have a mortgage value of currently of around 400,000. If they are paying, as they renewed in November, from our conversation with Mr. Thane, they probably renewed at somewhere between seven and nine percent. If you reduce them to a one or a two percent interest rate, you'd probably see a, they would see a reduction in their monthly expenses of somewhere between 1,200 and 1,800. It's my rough math, I'm, I haven't calculated because I don't know exactly what their dollar figures are, I don't know what their buyout with their current mortgage holder would be, so there are probably some penalties would have to be paid. The advantage to that is, the MD would be helping them without, and would be recovering the money over a period of 15 or 20 years. The disadvantage is, you have to, we have to find the 400-plus thousand dollars in cash out of a, out of a budget to actually pay for it upfront, but you would get that money back, even with a one percent interest rate, you would get that money back over, over a period of years. So there are, there are pros and cons. I would need to get more information and direction from council to reach out to Mr. Thane to actually get some details, so we could actually do some calculations, present council with, with some, with some detailed information. High level, that's kind of what it would look like, but I, to get some real numbers, I would need direction from council to, to dig in a little deeper with the.
Well, you'd have to go more than one percent, or else you're losing money, right? Because you're, you said you're making at least five percent on that 400,000 right now, right? So I don't know if that's a real, really good way to go about it or not, but we had to raise the, we had to raise the mill rate last time we did that with the Fire Department, right, so.
Yeah. So did we raise the mill rate for the Fire Department, or just did that?
Yeah, we did, right?
Mister Deputy Chair. Still worth looking into, I think, you know, maybe a one-time 25,000 until we can figure out if the minister's interested in supporting them, and maybe gives us a chance then to look at the interest, and you're right, Counselor Skarsen, but if they're paying eight or nine, I don't know what they're paying, who knows, but if they're paying eight or nine and we even charge them five, they're still making, they're saving three percent, so it's, it's something.
Well, I would say the mortgage rates are more around the five percent right now, right? So it's, I think it'd be a bit of a wash, but anyways, it's, I think it is important, and as soon as he did his presentation, I thought that right away, that's something I'd get behind, because like it was already mentioned, that's kind of a grass level, or grassroots level of fighting crime, right, is bringing some of these guys off the streets, so I'm not 100% sure where the 25,000 comes from, if that's what their ask is, and that will cover their utilities for the year, I'm 100% in favor of that, so, actually, I don't know where it comes from, I guess. Is the, so is Glendon, the Ag Society, getting that 150 this year for sure? Is that, is that decided as well?
Through the chair, they are eligible to apply for that amount, but as we seen from last year, it doesn't necessarily mean council will choose to, to fund them the full amount.
I'm just, just looking for a motion here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion for number one, then, that it comes from this fund here for 25,000 for this year.
Okay, through the chair, just for clarity, did you, the source of funding on that, currently their options are council's operating budget, which is a balance of 26,000, or the other option is cash flow reserves, if, if I.
So they have to be added to this group here, then, or what?
Or we can add them, if council chooses to, to this group, and they can apply for it through the same process.
It's kind of like we did with the seniors before, isn't it? Wasn't it out of here?
The seniors are, the two senior groups, actually, three senior groups are all included in here as eligible organizations.
Mister Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I'd rather, Counselor Skarsen, I'd rather not take it out of that fund right now, I'd rather just have it out of cash flow reserves for at least just the year, until we can sort out, you know, maybe the minister's going to help out.
It's not a yearly, it's not a yearly thing, right?
No, it's forever, it's, I'm just thinking, if we do it at least for one year, and then, but then that gives us a chance to kind of sort it out, and maybe, maybe we want to increase our Community Action Grant next year to cover it. I just don't want to cut into it now, and we're not going to have, we didn't have enough last year for the request, so I hate to cut into it right now. So I like your motion, I just think it's, we should be careful where it comes from.
Yeah, well, you can, you can cut into it now, or you can cut into it later, right? Like the, we might not use it all this year, right, and then we pulled out of the, out of the cash flow when we didn't have to, right, so.
Yeah, CIO.
Through the chair, to council, I'm not sure, cutting into that, if everybody applied that's currently on the list, we're a couple, $100,000 short already, that grant, if everybody on the list applied, we're already oversubscribed. There's about, if everybody on the list that, on the current list applied, the amount is a little over $700,000.
Yeah, but we said, that happened last year, and we said no, right?
Correct. So adding somebody to the list, it doesn't really cut into the grant, it's just another person on the list that would, that you'd end up having to say no to at some point. The only other option is through budget next year, in the fall, is, would be to increase that amount or, or decrease the potential applicants on the list.
Or later on this year, approve someone and.
Correct.
Pay them out of the cash flow then.
Okay, so what is your motion then?
Through the chair.
It hasn't changed, so.
My esteemed colleague just reminded me that there is another option, and because we are coming back to council here in April with the final, final budget for 2024, we could also use the 2024 operating budget, add it to that as part of that process. So we could add it, just like we just did with the library, $7,000, we can do that for this 25,000, or whatever amount council chooses.
So, Chair.
Yeah.
So could we do that one-time thing, like, oh, the operating budget 25,000, and then have administration discuss with, discuss with them about possible, what, are there options that where we could maybe save the money of their mortgage? Like, we won't, we don't know none of that until you guys sit and discuss with them, maybe there's that option.
Yeah, I think we can go with, sorry, I think we can go ahead with the first motion, and then if you want to make a follow-up motion to get administration to look at whatever, you can go ahead and do that.
Through the chair, that is correct. We could just modify option number one under request two, and just add furthermore that council directs administration to further pursue other options or discussions with, with the organization for future consideration.
Through the chair, I, I think we would prefer separate motions. They're two separate activities, they're not specifically tied together, so I would prefer two separate motions.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll just wait for the first motion to come up here, then, and then we'll read it out. And just let me know if it's not, if it's not what you wanted.
There's only two blanks to fill in, so. It doesn't matter, you pull out of, out of there now, or you pull out later, right?
funding request from Cold Lake Native Friendship Center for a one-time contribution in the amount of 25,000 for sponsorship. for a one-time contribution in the amount of twenty-five thousand for sponsorship of the Kukum's House Initiative to be funded from the 2024 council operating budget. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I thought we were pointing out of the community association grant.
Yeah, if we can get that changed to the community association operating grant, that'd be, I think that's what the motion is intended there.
Okay, so, so we will pull it from the five hundred thousand currently budgeted for in the community operating, community association operating program grant, our program budget, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the suggestion was to pull it out of the, you said the council?
Through the chair, Councillor Skarsen's motion is to pull it from the, or to source the funding from the 2024 community association operating grant program budget.
Yeah, no, I got that, but originally that's not what you had thought, is that?
I had originally thought that it was following Susan's recommendation to pull it from the 2024 operating budget.
Oh, okay.
And to amend that budget to incorporate the extra twenty-five thousand, just like we did with the library additional funding.
Okay, no, I was just curious because I thought, I thought they had said council operating budget, is that what, no, okay.
That was another option for sure, Councillor Swigert, if council had chosen under, which currently has a balance of twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's the same motion, but the funding source is changed here to community association operating grant program budget. Any discussion on the motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just for clarity, we are using this budget as a source of funding. However, are we also requiring them to go through the same application process as the other? Or this is a straight a hundred percent approval?
I think they should, but they kind of already did, is that right? Like, is there any information they did provide that you would need as well, or just the application itself?
Through the chair, the, the application process is a bit, a bit more, there's a few more requirements that would have, would be required. AKA confirmation of, of where they have pending funding support requests, existing partnerships that they currently have. I believe also a sustainability plan is a requirement of that grant program. So there, it is a bit more of a process for them to apply for it versus council, the way it's worded right now is to approve it without that application. So I just was looking for confirmation.
So do you have to be approved to, to get put on that list then?
Through the chair, that is correct, council appoints or approves organizations to be a part of this list. Which would then require, would mean they could apply for it every year.
Because that might be, you know, it's not really fair to other groups, I guess, to say these guys are automatic without applying, right? So I mean, maybe the motion should be to say they are be put on the list and then they can apply like anyone else.
If, if that is, that is a valid motion as well, if council wants to add them permanently to the list.
Counsel for Davis.
Yeah, so, so are you saying that this year it's a twenty-five, but next year if they want to apply, they have to go through the same, the same thing that they, that everybody else goes through?
Well, I think that, I guess my opinion is that it should be, if they're applying to this fund, they should apply like anyone else. I guess, what do you guys think about that? Because.
Seriously, they should apply this year as well.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Chair? I just don't think it's, they're totally different things, it's not a community, I mean, they're not, they're not a, I mean, we didn't write this up, this community association operating grant to take that into consideration. I just, I think if we're, if we're willing to fund it, which I am, I don't, I don't think it should come out of this community, it's a different thing, should come out of a different pot of money. I don't know, and this is going to cause problems now because then we have, we've got to, we've got to change this policy because they're not listed in it, so they really can't apply. And so we just, you've just generated a whole bunch more kind of, I think, work by trying to take it out of this grant, I think.
Is there any extra work, like is it, do they not follow the same criteria as let's say a senior students center? Well, the drop, the three drop in centers are.
No, they're not listed now, so I would ask admin, then we'll have to change this before they could even apply. And then, and then they may not even meet the, you know, the criteria, I'm not sure. I think they're different, I don't think it should be part of that, that's just my opinion.
So can somebody explain to me what we have to change in order for them to apply to get on this?
I, I guess I'm just going to make the point again, it's way simpler if we don't take it out of that. I mean, it, you know, it's, it comes from one pot or another, but it's really all the same pots of money. So I, I would say they're not listed on that, so they, and I don't ever think they should be. I, I just think if we're interested in funding it, which I think we are, then we should just fund it, take it out of cash flow reserves or whatever, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, just fund the twenty-five and let's go through a little bit of a transition and find out if we can get funding from, from elsewhere. If we can get funding, do the mortgage, I think just, just ask, we should treat it as an ask. And then just see where, where the rest of it goes. And if, if they don't qualify for anything else, then we can put them on the list and get them to apply like everybody else will moving forward. And, and I would also ask administration if that would happen to help them along with that application. Because I know there's some struggles there as well with, with the application form in, in understanding grants and things like that, so.
Through, through the chair, I can confirm that, yes, we do provide a lot of, a lot of support to all the applicants of that grant program when it comes to the application process. We coach them through it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree that, well, one, if they're going to pull it out of this, I think they should apply, so we can put it as it was on the original motion that was put up there.
Okay, to amend, to amend the 2024 operating budget?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, sounds good.
We can discuss it later today if you want to add to the list, for sure. But I just don't think they should be pulling out of the application, that's all. Everyone else has to apply, right?
Sounds good, through the chair, then we will just add that to, to the discussions with them and identifying next steps forward.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair? So then we're going to go ahead and make a second motion on administration, okay?
Yeah. All right, moved by Councillor Skarsen, the council approves amending the 2024 Municipal District of Bonneville, 2024 operating budget to add twenty-five thousand for funding to the Cold Lake Native Friendship Center Kukum's House Initiative. Any discussion on the motion? I, I guess I'm just, I'm not personally not in favor of amending the budget over it, I was okay with taking out of the policy, but that's my thoughts, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Do you have a second motion there, Councillor Subcheck?
Yeah, the second motion for administration to have discussions with Kukum House on other possibilities or avenues of where we could fund them or with the mortgage. I have no idea how you.
Okay, is that, well, good to you, Councillor Subcheck? Okay, so it's moved by, by Councillor Subcheck that council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding long-term funding options for the Cold Lake Native Friendship Center Kukum's House Initiative to a future meeting of council as discussed. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure. Okay, welcome back, everybody, we'll go to nine point three point four, the Junior A Pontiacs.
Administration received a letter from the Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs requesting a commitment of financial support for an upcoming bid to host the 2025 National Junior A Championships. The bid submission deadline is March twenty-first, 2024. In January 2023, council approved a request from the Pontiacs to, for the MD to provide a financial commitment of a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus half of the associated facility costs at the Bonneville and District Centennial Center towards the Pontiacs bid to host either the 2024 or 2025 National Junior A Championships, if, sorry, if their bid was successful. Their bid was unsuccessful with the event instead going to Oakville, Ontario for twenty-four and Oketoks, Alberta in twenty-five. Earlier this year, the Pontiacs were advised that the, that Oketoks has withdrawn their bid to host the 2025 event. In light of this development, the Pontiacs have submitted a letter to council today requesting the same commitment of financial support for their re-submission of a bid to host the 2025 National Junior A Championships. Attached for council's consideration is their request letter, and appendix A is well, sorry, appendix A is the request for decision from January tenth, when council had approved it initially. Appendix B is the request letter from the Pontiacs just received on February twenty-eighth. And appendix C is the support package or bid package of the Pontiacs for, for their bid. Reference to our strategic plan is goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. The cost would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand plus additional facility costs if successful in their bid. The source of funding, this request is not included in the 2024 municipal operating budget. The only other option is to source from municipal reserves pending their approval. Communication strategy is that the Pontiacs will be notified in writing of council's decision today. Administration's recommended action is, we put a couple of options there to approve or deny, however, this is purely at council's discretion.
Yeah, thanks, just, just a little bit of clarity, so is this event going to happen at the same time as, like the games, no?
Year before.
Year before?
But on that note, I think that, I do, I think it's, I understand that it's a quick turnaround now for them. For anyone to know the backstory of it here, they applied for the games against three other, or two others towns. And since then, two, two of those towns have left the Hockey Canada, so Bonneville's the only one left out of that group. So I'm, I'm just curious if they actually were able to, you know, hold Hockey Canada's feet to the fire bit and say, listen, we're the only ones left. Maybe we shouldn't have to pay as much, right? So I'd like to ask that question for sure. I know that when this was approved at first and then, you know, they didn't win the bid. You know, we then decided to finance or pay for the Winter Games, which was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, so these are just some things to kind of keep in mind when we make this decision. It would have been nice to have a delegation here to talk about this, you know, for such a large ask as well, right? So I just think a lot of things have changed since the last time they, we, we were presented with this, right?
Yeah, I kind of, I'm along the same lines as, as yourself, laws has changed because all those guys went to the Western Hockey Association, right? Or. Yeah, yeah, whatever it is, yeah, so it's a little different, like to get a little more info on that for sure and see where we, where we go. I mean, maybe, maybe this, maybe this is, this is the sport they really need because if there's a, you know, if everybody is taken off, is this something that they, that's, that's going to solidify them again? Not sure, so, but love to see them here.
Well, I, I'd like to see them here, I just, I'm concerned now about this bid submission deadline, March twenty-first, they don't have any time at all to do anything. But, but we're looking at, you know, we're just given a package of, I don't know, eighty pages or a hundred pages and like, we, you know, we really need somebody up here talking, talking about it. Because how does this affect Cold Lake or Glendon or Bonneville, is it all in Bonneville or is it kind of farmed out to some of the other arenas? Or is this a regional thing or is it just a Bonneville thing? I'm just looking at you, Councillor Skarsen, because you know more about. The hockey stuff, but.
I'm not involved with this at all, but I, I would guess that it's all the Centennial Center. It'd be very similar to the World Junior Championships every year, right? So I think there's eight or ten teams that are involved.
But did they not play in Cold Lake too though? Or no, I thought they, I thought they moved around a bit.
No, I don't think so.
I think we need more information and they got such a tight timeline, I, I don't know.
And again, I'm curious as to, we mentioned March twenty-first, but it's, they actually went up bidding because, you know, the two other teams that were bidding, the first time were gone now, so.
So is the deadline, the deadline?
Is the deadline the deadline?
When there's only one person applying, right?
I just, sorry, and I just know that with the Winter Games, it was a very similar situation where they kind of told us November, but it was February whenever they kind of decided to announce it or whatever. And again, they were really without options, so they, they donated or they gave us a bunch of extra money. This is kind of the same situation, so.
Do we, I, I believe it's a good thing, we've got lots of young players around here and all that, but it's good for the community. Is the town's request the same, is their request for the town the same as ours or?
Through the chair, it is not identified if there was a request submitted.
Yeah, I'd like to see more information, this comes like, always seems like a lot of this stuff comes right, oh, deadline, deadline, then. And if we're the only team applying, I'm sure they'll, they'll extend the deadline if need be, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I would, I'd love to see this delegation fast-forwarded to be on the list so we can kind of fit them in with their deadlines and find out if the deadline is the, the, the actual deadline that is, that is needed. Because I mean, you probably, if they don't answer these guys, I mean, there's just, it does, there's like, there's a domino effect to the organization and we would hate to be in the way, be in the way of that.
There is, there is no dead, no council meeting or committee at all before this deadline.
Correct, but I mean, that's what we have to do is figure out.
Through the chair.
Ask for more information.
I could reach out to them following my, the presentation here and see if they could actually attend the meeting today if council chooses, given the short timeline.
That's really fast-forwarding.
Well, if they're interested, maybe they will.
A hundred percent, which is good.
Can we do that then? Can we just temporarily sort of delay this?
Would you like to table?
Okay, I'll table it.
And through, and through the chair, a change in the agenda like that will require a procedural, a motion as well. And I believe at this late stage in the meeting, it would require you now as voted council to amend the agenda to allow them to come to speak to council.
Okay, so we have a motion, I think, to table, table this.
Do we need the, the one before the other?
Mr. Chair, if you just give me one moment, I'll confirm that.
Sure.
Again, we don't know if they're doing a delegation for the town of Bonneville tonight or not, so.
And through the chair, we've kind of had a best practices since I've been here, that any donation of over five thousand dollars required a delegation. That's kind of been our standard practice, so a request of a hundred and seventy-five certainly should have had a delegation attend with it, but.
Yeah, I think this, because it's a, it's a re-ask is probably the, the reason why, you know, it's not, but there's more questions, there's, there's more questions now than there is before.
Sorry, through the chair, I just did pull the agenda from the March twelfth, Town of Bonneville Council. Bonneville council meeting for later this evening, and there is an item on there for, from the Junior A Pontiacs request for a letter of financial commitment towards this bid.
And, and how much are they asking from the town?
They are asking. Any amount of 175,000 plus half the cost of Centennial Centre for the 11-day tournament. Total estimated cost of the C2 Centre is 38,500 based on the cost from the 2016 host of the event. Estimated total request of, of support is 213,500.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Interesting, like, isn't this one of those other issues, the reason that we formed the Regional Recreation Group though, so that, you know, we, we'll make a decision here to maybe shut it down and Bonneville will go ahead and fund it and then it gets shut down, but I thought like the Regional Committee would have had this, these discussions, I, I was hoping.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So if council would like to amend the agenda to add a delegation from the organization, it would need to be done with unanimous support from the council. The motion would need to be carried unanimously. Having said that, I don't know if you'd want to make that motion now before we know for sure whether or not we can add them to the agenda.
Yeah, we can just go with a motion to table it for now, and I don't think we need a timeframe on it. If it comes back, then that'll be when it comes back.
Yeah, we would just need a motion to lift it from the table when, whenever administration would be able to bring it back to the council.
Okay, I'll make that motion again to table it.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this?
Just table.
Any discussion on the motion? What's that?
No discussion.
Oh, yeah, right, sorry, thank you for, okay, let's just call for the vote.
You're the chair.
Yeah, no, not that time. Okay, that's carried.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go on to reserve fund policy, 9.4.1.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
So the, what you see before you are two policies to establish consistent standards and guidelines for the management of reserve funds for council's approval. The Municipal District of Bonneville recognizes the need for prudent business practices that will enhance the MD's long-term financial strength. The following policies will provide the structure and guidelines for improved financial flexibility, cash flow management, and the ability of the MD to achieve council's strategic plan while providing financial flexibility, property tax stabilization, provision of consistent service levels, and will reduce the need for debt financing. The two policies are attached to this report. The reference to council's strategic plan is council's goal number one, building a viable diversified regional economy. Objective number four, to create a municipal financial sustainability plan of which these two reserves would be, become a part. The report will be posted on the MD's website under the council agenda for today, and the recommended action is that council adopts new policy number C-2B.40, cash flow reserve policy as recommended by the committee of the whole. And secondly, that council adopts new policy number C-2B.041, equipment replacement reserve policy as recommended by the committee of the whole. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I can certainly go through each policy and identify some of the major points if that, if you so desire, or we can just move along because you've already received that presentation at committee.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, just looking for a motion then, I guess? Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Sure.
Okay. Move by Counselor Fadiev that council adopts new policy number C-2B.040, cash flow reserve policy as recommended by the committee of the whole. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you very much. Where are we here? And then I guess looking for another motion, the equipment replacement reserve policy.
I'll go to approve that policy.
Okay, it's moved by Counselor Fadiev, thank you, that council adopts new policy number C2B.041, equipment replacement reserve policy as recommended by the committee of the whole. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will call for the vote. Thank you. That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we need to, and maybe the CAO can help me out on this here, but in light of our previous discussion with the tabling and moving unanimously to get a delegation in, I feel like we should just approve now if we're gonna have a delegation come in because if we don't, they, they get called, come in, and then someone says no, then what was the point in calling them, right? So.
So the, the only concern, Mr. Chair, with that is that if council amends the agenda and they're unable to attend, you're now going to have to amend the agenda again to remove it because you won't be able to continue with the delegation.
Okay. Okay. Take that chance and then go here. Okay, so we'll move on to 9.5.1, CNRL agreement.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. I'm here with RFD for CNRL Agreement for Township Road 622 Construction. Canadian Natural Resources Limited, CNRL, has approached the MD for permission to upgrade four miles of Township Road 622 from Range Road 470 to Range Road 474. This upgrade is for CNRL operations in the Dupree area. CNRL is proposing the MD enter into a repayment plan with CNRL over a period of time until the full cost of the project is paid back to the MD. Upgrade to Township Road 622 includes a grade base paved for three miles from Range Road 470 to 473, and then a high-grade gravel upgrade for one mile from 473 to Range Road 474. Engineered estimates on the project are 8.4 million with CNRL contributing 4.1 million to the project in 2024. This will have a balance of approximately 4.4 million dollars that the MD will contribute to be paid back to the MD over a period of time by CNRL. The MD has entered into a similar type of agreement with CNRL in 2017 for Township Road 642 and Range Road 475 attached as Appendix A. This had CNRL repaying the MD over four years until their portion 50% was paid back to the MD. As this project will be 100% funded by CNRL, the MD will not have any expense for the project and will retain an upgraded asset after the project is completed and accepted by the MD. If approval by council, administration will retain legal services to draft the terms of the agreement for both parties to sign. Reference to the strategic plan is goal one, building a viable and diversified economy, and the objective of developing an economic development strategy inclusive of business, industry, attraction, retention, and expansion while maintaining our rural influences. And goal number two, enhancing safety in the community, the objective transportation and infrastructure network safety. The cost and sources of funding, the project funding of 4.4 million to be sourced from the cash flow reserve and repayments, repayment funds to be placed back into this reserve when received annually. Communication strategy is communication via the council minutes on the MD website, and it's administration's recommendation that council approve the unbudgeted amount of 4.4 million from the cash flow reserves for four miles of Township Road 622 reconstruction, and furthermore, direct administration to draft an agreement for the repayment of funds by Canadian Natural Resources Limited by December 31st, 2028.
Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this back on the table. I'd like to make the options for number one.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Fadiev, for moving that council approves an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of 4,400,000 for four miles of reconstruction costs on Township Road 622 to be funded from the cash flow reserve, and furthermore, directs administration to enter into an agreement with Canadian Natural Resources for the recovery of these costs with payments to be completed by December 31st, 2028. Ready, yeah, counselors?
Yeah, I just want to know, how is the payment date completed by December 31st, 2028 decided on? Like, how did we come to that conclusion?
Through the, through the chair, the remaining money is going to be about 4.4 million dollars over four years, that's 1.1 million for the remainder, because they're going to be coming up with the 4.1 initially of, at this year, so that's how 2028 came about. Twenty, 25, 26, 27, and 28, four payments of 1.1 million to total 4.4. So similar to the other agreement, we had it over, excuse me, I believe the other one was five-year payment of a million dollars or a million two each year. I took the same, same kind of formula of a million dollars-ish per year, came out to four years at 1.1 million dollars.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wondered, like, why can't we have it a sooner date? Because that's money that's take, that's not in our account and unless they're having a issue with funding.
Through the chair, that's at council's, council's discretion of the repayment time. I can propose anything. This is just our recommendation. Like I said, it, it kind of mirrors the last payment of, of just over a million dollars per year back to the MD, but again, that's at council's discretion.
I think Counselor Swagert had something.
Yeah, it was just a kind of question about their estimates, 8.4 million, so that's three miles of good paving and then a mile of high-grade gravel, apparently. Is that, is that a good estimate? Is that any, like, based on what we do?
Through the chair, that is the engineered estimate from, from the engineering firm that was retained for the, for the project.
Is that about what we pay too, though, if we're getting roads done? Is that close?
Through the chair, we just did of 610, we did three miles of grade base paved, which was just south of 7 million dollars, or around the 7 million dollar mark for three miles. This is a million four on top of that, so that's giving that a million four for the last mile. So in my estimation, that would be similar to what we're paying, we have been paying for the, for the construction projects that we had.
Okay, and if it came in way higher than that, then CNRL just kind of deals with it, I guess?
Through the chair, that would, I, I would probably be coming back with, you know, maybe a different, a different proposal, but at the end of the day, this is, the total cost of the project will be 100% funded, and that, through the discussions that we had with CNRL, they would be 100% funded by CNRL. Again, it just council's discretion as to what the repayment schedule would be like.
Counselors?
Yeah, I'd like to ask to approach them with another option, like a sooner repayment date, like, we, they, the provincial government's giving moratorium and all these breaks, and it's not like they're not making profits every quarter, and I think it'd be a benefit for our community that we get our money back sooner.
Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I think this was presented to us quite a while ago, and then it got pulled off because of some funding issues. I think what is happening is they have a X amount of dollars to put into the area, and if we ask for more, more money, I think maybe the project might not be. I'm afraid to, to lose a great opportunity of, of, of this, I guess, expansion to our roads if we, if we don't come up with it. Yes, they are using it, and I think we have to work together with, with industry. I totally get the, the money part, but I think, you know, there's only so much money allocated to this area for certain projects, and I think this is where that sits.
Counselor Stupchak?
No, I'm, I got no disagreement, but if you don't ask, you don't know. If, if they not in agreement, we can have some other options available. We can propose, and if not, then go forward with this one, but.
Through, through the chair, if I may, to Counselor Stupchak, I would need a direction off of this motion to approach them with. If it, if it is three years, then, then I would approach them with that. If it's four years, I would need that directive from council so that I can approach it. I can't, I don't know if I can approach it and then, because either way it would have to come, if I did that and they wanted three years, or if we approached it with three years and they said, no, we'll take four, I would have to come back again. So I would just, I would like, I guess, a directive, an act, or a, a solid direction from council as to what the time, timeframe repayment would be so I can approach them with that, so we can get this project going.
I think it's an option number three. Counselor Stupchak, you want to put your thoughts in on that one, that you give Mr. Pizalco, I guess, some direction to that? You said you want to do it in six months?
Yeah, my direction is start low and then go high if you have to. Start with a two-year plan, and if not, if it doesn't work, like, work with them, but make sure we don't exceed this plan, though. Is that good enough?
So the motion would be a repayment plan not to exceed December 31st, 2028? Could that be a motion?
Well, maybe we'll just leave it the same. No, my motion is like, well, it's Counselor Fadiev's motion that he has to amend, right? But if we could put a two-year plan, offer, see if we can get anywhere with a two-year plan, and then if not, try the three-year plan.
It's presently five years, right? Sorry, is it, is it presently five, though? End of 2028?
Four.
Okay. We got 24, 25, 26, 27, end of 28.
Through the, through the chair, the repayment of the 4.4 million would be over four years. The total, because they're kicking in one, or 4.1 million in 2024 for the project, so that's not included in, in the 4.4. This motion is to repay the 4.4. Now, I guess with this motion, we could potentially have it for, if, if all the payments are done by 2028, we can enter into an agreement for three years, which would have them done by 2028, but essentially be done in 2027. I guess this motion would, would cover yours as well. The, the longest we'll go is 2028, but we could have it earlier, we could have it done earlier, I guess, so perhaps this motion would be enough to, to encompass what you're asking.
Does that make sense to you? So we need to amend this motion at all?
I would ask for other viewpoints, but in my, in my view, I don't think we would because if we enter into a three-year plan, it's still within the timeframe listed in the, in the motion, but we won't exceed 2028.
Mr. Chair, the, the way this motion is worded, it would, it would, in my mind, this gives administration to, to direction to ensure that the payments are completed by December 31st, 2028, but with the direction from council, there's nothing saying that they can't be done sooner.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. My only concern is, this motion clearly gives us direction to allow the payment structure to end on December 31st of 2028.
Yeah.
We could walk out of here this afternoon, and that's the motion of council, and Counselor Stupchak or any other counselor could say six months from now, so where did we end up? We ended up with this motion. I would prefer to see direction from council. If you want to see a two-year plan, a three-year plan, personally, I think it gives way more clarity to us and clarity to council to see a motion that directs a different time period if council wants a different time period. If council is comfortable with December of 2028, then I think the motion could stand. If council wants to see a shorter time period... If council wants to see a shorter time period, I would prefer for clarity for both sides of the table to have a different timeline. Otherwise, we leave here today and it's December 31st of 2028. And so if council wants a different timeline, let, let, please make a motion defining that timeline. Or if you're happy with 2028, let, let this motion stand.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Swigert?
Yeah, we're, it's a, you know, it's a freebie for us. I don't want to kind of, you know, I don't, sure, it'd be nice to have the money back sooner. But you're going to piss them off maybe by kind of muddying it up. I don't know if you want to do that.
Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I think the precedent was set with, with previous agreements. And I think that's kind of what they were budgeting for. So I think that's where that goes, so.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, we're going to go back now to, sorry, are we here?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If I may, this would maybe just be, I guess, like a motion arising. We wouldn't need to go back to the previous item that's been tabled because this motion would be to amend the agenda to add a new item. And then once council decided they wanted to continue their discussions with the funding request, that's when you would want to make the motion to lift the previous item from the table.
So the motion to lift would be towards the very end?
After the delegation presentation of council approves the amendment to the agenda, correct?
Make the motion to amend the agenda to request a delegation?
Okay. Just wait for that to come up and then I'll read it. Okay, moved by Counselor Fadiev that council approves amending the March 12th, 2024 regular meeting of council agenda with the following addition, 5.1, 10:30 a.m., Bonneville Junior A Pontiacs. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. All right, then I guess we have to have a motion to lift the item from the table. No, we don't? Oh, not to the delegation? Yeah, go ahead. Come on up, Neil. You're here for a delegation.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thanks for, for having me. I hear we have a few questions on the request that was sent a couple of weeks back. So I'm here to answer any questions you guys have.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Swigert.
Yeah, so first, my question, not directly related, but kind of, we sort of formed a rec, a regional recreation group that wasn't, wasn't familiar with us at all. And so this, this poses a problem because if our council refuses it or accepts it and the town of Bonneville refuses, then you got this problem that we're not dealing with. So I guess I'm just saying, man, I, it's too bad it hadn't have been brought forward to that rec committee and they would have talked about it first. Because apparently Bonneville's meeting tomorrow night? Tonight?
Tonight.
And we're meeting now. So it's always that issue, right? One of them says no and the others, whatever. So, but we need more information because we have a huge package here of, I don't know, 100 pages, something. I didn't have time to go through the whole thing. So we, we had Counselors Carson probably could talk more about it. But are you, the bid apparently closes on the 21st of March or 24th, 21st?
All documents have to be submitted by the 26th, I believe. But to put everything together, we're looking to have it all, all the commitments done by the 21st.
Okay. And so is that, and we're questioning, is that like a kind of a true deadline, though? There's only one, isn't there only one community that can actually accept this bid and that, that's ours?
So this would be a true bid process. To my knowledge, when we bid on this would have been last year, early, middle of last year, we put in a bid to host either the 2024 or the 2025 National Junior A Championships. Since then, and as I, we did include a letter that we were not successful in either '24 or '25. '24 went to Oakville, Ontario, and '25 was awarded to the Okahtokee, in Okahtokes. At that time, when the restructuring of the league happened this year and Okahtokes left Hockey Canada, that left a void for the 2025 tournament. Hockey Canada's request was that the event stay within Alberta. So in a very short timeline now, they've requested any of the communities that are interested in bidding to bid for the 2025 event. But they'd like everything done by the end of March where they want to make a decision in early April. So with the tight timeline, again, not always optimal and working and Hockey Canada can be fun to work with when they put timelines like that. But we've looked to just essentially re, not redo the bid, but update the bid and confirm if we have still the commitments from the municipalities, the MLA, the MP, the Centennial Centre, and some of the local associations that we're working with. So we're, we're basically going to go with a identical bid if we can. The tournament structure and that hasn't changed as far as there still would be 10 teams from all over the country that would be coming into the area for about a 10-day period. And so that's why the, the very quick timeline and, and to speak to Counselor Swigert, to, as far as the regional development or the Regional Sports and Tourism Committee, which I do sit on, I, I wasn't sure if it would be because it was a request that was done previously, if it was the best route to go through there, having four municipalities, but this event would only target the two municipalities. Of course, there would be some spin-off into the city of Coal Lake, but no events would be held into the city of Coal Lake with this. So again, not sure the structure, if it was correct to go through that channel. And with the timing, it was a little, pretty tough to go through all that when they expect an answer by the middle of March.
Okay, so that, that clears it up a little bit. Because I was curious, I thought maybe there were going to be games in Coal Lake, England, and then, so no, just, just this is here?
It would just be held in the Centennial Centre.
Okay.
So thanks for that. Yeah, because I was kind of wondering with, with the breakup in associations and some people jumping ship elsewhere, if the number of teams would still be the same, but they are, what kind of numbers are we, I guess, anticipating again for the area?
For the amount of athletes or?
Yeah.
So you're looking at 10 teams with the minimum, 30 players and staff per team, not counting any, you know, parents, fans, spectators. But you're looking at about 30 people. So you're, for sure, you're looking at 300 people just for the organizations coming in. And that's not, again, not to speak to any of their fans they would bring with them, but they would range from the Maritimes to the, some of their northeastern United States have some organizations in them, all the way out to Alberta.
So three, 300 to 500 would be a pretty solid number somewhere in there?
For strictly athletes, yeah, you'd be looking around there.
Okay. Thanks.
Have you guys ever looked at what kind of economic impact it's into for the local
For sure.
Community directly?
No, thanks for, thank you, Counselor Slipchuck. The, when we held the, the past, the 2016 and 2018 World Junior A Challenges, when the study was done afterwards, there was an impact of about $2 million on our area. And that was for a span of about seven days. So now this event is going to be spanning closer to 10 to 12 days with more teams coming in that are all now, you know, staying in the hotels, eating, and being, obviously, with some days, the schedule's built that each team would have two days off. And that's what I alluded to in the bid package, where that's where I wanted to reflect on some of our attractions in the area. In the middle of May, you know, some of our, our campgrounds are open. The summer aspect, I'm hoping, would be up, up at, at Canooso Ridge. And for them to be able to do some of these things in our area on their days off, you know, visit the city of Coal Lake, the marinas. So it's a little bit different than in the past where they were in Bonneville for six days and that was it when we hosted those international tournaments. It's a, it's on a larger scale. But so I would anticipate your spin-off is going to be upwards of that, over $2 million within that timeframe.
Thank you.
So do you know if there's other communities bidding?
Unofficially, no, or I guess officially, no, but unofficially, yes. I believe there is two other communities in Alberta that will be, and they're, they're quite large centers, from my knowledge. But we will be up against it as there was previous bidders when we did this in, in 2023.
Counselor Fadiev?
So you're not the only bidder. So that's why we need the timelines to be where they're at and so you can have the chance to get it here.
Correct. Unlike 2018 where, when we held, hosted the World Junior A Challenge, there was no other bidders at that time and they approached our area similar to the, with the Winter Games that have just happened. We will be on a competitive bid situation and thus the timeframe. And they did not approach us and ask, hey, you guys had, had bid last time, would you still be interested in doing it again? It was, we're going to keep it in Alberta. Any of the teams, organizations in Alberta that are interested, please submit your bid by this timeframe.
Okay. Thanks for clarity. Awesome.
Well, if this has this kind of economic impact for the community, I, I can't see why we don't stand behind them and go forward with this. And because we have a lot of business owners in town that live in the MD, we all support each other, help each other out around here. And I'd like to put motion forward that we...
I think we're having a delegation at the moment.
If, if, if I may.
See us stand behind it.
If I may, Mr. Chair, two other points that I just wanted to make sure I brought up in the legacy plan. So any excess funds that would be realized at the end of the event, which we anticipate there, there would be, we do have a, a legacy plan in the bid document currently that would see us leave 50% back with the facility for upgrades needed in the, the arena portion itself. I know being a, a, a co-owner of that, the centre, that might be, and the other part was that we wanted to touch on the regional tourism aspect, again, trying to put our area on the map for all over Canada, so.
Not, I haven't really caught that. And about when is the deadline and when will you know that you want to get it?
So they, they're requesting to have your bids in, I believe, is March 21st is the last deadline to submit the bid. And they're expecting an answer by late April, early May, is what Hockey Canada has let us know. And again, if unsuccessful, then obviously none of the funds would be required strictly if we are, it's successful in the bid, so.
Well, so this funding now be the only funding in your request or is there going to be more funding required to prepare everything for these games?
This, if we are successful, this would be the only request coming before MD Council.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Think it helped.
So I guess the next motion will be to lift it off the table, correct? I'll make the motion to lift it off the table.
Sorry. We have a motion by Counselor Fadiev to lift the Junior A Pontiacs off the ta, off the table. And just call for the vote on that, I guess? That's carried. Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Slipchuck?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for option one, but where do we get the funding from? On operating guide?
Through the chair. That was actually what I was just going to suggest is another option is for council to sources from the 2025 municipal operating budget.
Okay, I'll go with that. Would ask your suggestion.
The other thing that I may add is if you wanted to put in an estimated cost for half of the facility costs from reviewing the numbers that are being presented and discussed at the Town and Bonneville meeting this evening, that estimated cost is $38,500, thereby making the total commitment amount of $213,500. Which is reflected in the motion.
Okay. Okay, so it's moved by Counselor Slipchuck that council approves a letter of financial commitment, a letter, yeah, that council approves a letter of financial commitment in the amount of $175,000 plus half the facility costs estimated to be $38,500 for a total of $213,500 to be included in the 2025 municipal operating budget. Any discussion on the motion?
Can we just add the C2 facility cost? Just so we know, people don't think it's anywhere else. Just say C2. It is C2.
So you're proposing an amendment to the motion?
Well, just the, yeah, just say C2 facility cost rather than just facility cost.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's another, thank you for changing that. Okay, any discussion? No. Okay, I have to have something to say, I guess, myself on this one. I just struggled to make a, a big budget adjustment this, with such short notice. This came to us this morning, like, a lot of information. I thank Neil for coming in here and doing a delegation. But we haven't had the, staff haven't had a chance, really, I don't think, to prepare a lot on this. And I certainly haven't had a chance to think about it. So that's it.
And I, I, you know, I would maybe agree with you, but this is next, 2025. So they got a year, we got a year to, to prepare.
Yeah, Counselor Fadiev?
Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is a resubmission. This was all done before for this and we committed in the past. We were, you know, like, we were notified that the bids weren't, weren't, weren't accepted. Now they are. So it's just, just a re-interpretation of what was in the past. This is nothing new. And we did commit to it before.
And of course, that being said, though, we did, we've since put a bunch of money into the 2026 Alberta Winter Games aft, after we submitted this and didn't get this one the first time. So now we're putting a lot more money. So our recreation budget is actually going up quite a bit here if we, if we approve this, that's all. All right, any other discussion? I will call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you very much. And we will break for lunch now.